So I'd like to start with the vision, obviously from the district's vision down to Kane Elementary School's vision. And just highlighting, you know, the belief that our school has around every child being successful. Celebrating a love of learning, we want to make sure that kids feel joyful and excited in the work that they're doing every day in school. Peaking curiosity, helping students kind of form their own identities and who they are as they're growing older. Establishing choice inside of our school and our instruction while maintaining rigorous academic standards. And responding to a culturally responsive and relevant curriculum for the families that we serve here at Kane Elementary School. So oftentimes I like to start this presentation with kind of like what is receivership? And so this does come from federal law, so the Every Student Succeeds Act is a federal legislation to say that in the country, we should have kids performing as readers and as mathematicians. And so from the president down, there's these laws that are put into place. And then from those laws that are at the federal level, New York State takes those laws and says, what does that look like inside of our New York State schools? And so the New York State ELA math and science exams, the Regents exams at the high school level is how New York State interprets this federal legislation. And says, this is how New York State students will show their performance across these areas and these domains. And so one of the things in identifying an accountability system, so how is it that we hold all schools accountable to growing readers and mathematicians? The other side of that coin is when schools are struggling to perform on ELA and math state assessments, the state has a plan for what is it that they're going to do about those schools that are struggling to perform? And in 1617 Kane was identified as a school that was struggling to perform on ELA math and attendance. And so we were put into a status called receivership, which quickly said in 1617 meant that we were presenting as the bottom 5% of schools in New York State. There was 44 other schools that fell into this designation. Obviously, when you have all schools put into it, someone's going to be at the bottom of that pool, and Kane happened to be in that space. And so what the state says is that you have two years, that you're in the bottom 5% now, but you're going to have two years to show what they were calling demonstrable improvement. And they were picking indicators, areas that we had to show growth in. And so we'll talk a little bit about what those were, but roughly they were growth in English language arts test. And the way that we know that we're performing is on our New York State ELA assessment that we take in April. Along our math assessment, which we oftentimes take right after the ELA exam. The state wants us to monitor what's called chronic absenteeism. And so chronic absenteeism is a label that students should attend school for 180 school days of 180 days. But when a child is missing 10% of the school year, what we know is that students are going to, students that are missing 10% of the school year overall are going to struggle academically. And so what the state flags is where is your attendance rate, where is that chronic absenteeism rate? And how is it that students might not be engaging in school the way that we would hope them to? And then we analyze that data along our subgroup. So what is the demographic makeup of Kane Elementary School? And are all subgroups performing at the same rate as one another? And the idea behind this law is to say, we need to know how schools are doing in the United States of America. And then New York State says, and then in New York State, we definitely want to know how schools are doing. And so the intent really from New York State Education Department is to really help schools when they put schools into receivership is to say, something is happening in that community or something is happening in that school that we really feel like we need to help them turn that school around. And so what does this really mean for Kane? So when we hear about receivership, what does that really mean for Kane Elementary School? So again, in 2015 to 2017 Kane was showing two years of decline along those ELA and math scores and our attendance rates. And so we went into receivership. At that time, New York State is saying that the superintendent could serve as the receiver of the school, meaning that the superintendent has some special privileges of what they may or may not do inside of a school that's labeled as receivership. In 2018, 2019, we did meet eight of the 10 indicators that we were supposed to do. This was pre-COVID. At that same time, there was a rezoning in the district, and so the population actually of the building turned over in that same year. So 2018, 2019 was a relatively successful year. In 2019, 2020, obviously in March of 2020, we went out on COVID. And instruction went virtual for many students and families, which what Kane learned in that process was that was very difficult for a lot of our students and our families, because moving to a virtual learning experience was not necessarily something that families or even our teachers were used to at that time. And so in 2020 and 2021, this New York State Education Department said, we're going to do no harm to schools. We're not going to make you, we're not going to look to see, did you get worse? And we're not going to look to see, did you get better? They were going to just kind of pause the accountability system. And so that's what happened in 2020, 2021, '21, and '22. Last year, in '21, '22 school year in March was the first time that we restarted the accountability system, meaning the kids sat for the ELA and math state test. And the state was going to start to relook at our scores and see how our children were performing. And then in '23, '24, they have reset our progress targets. I will talk with you about what that reset looks like and now what demonstrable progress indicators we're being held to moving forward. And so the question always becomes, okay, so how do you get out of this bottom 5%? What does that mean? And are we still in the bottom 5%? It's a little bit tricky because the state again in doing no harm hasn't rerun those numbers to see who's in the bottom 5% now. But what we are held to is that we have to show progress each of the years according to those demonstrable progress indicators that we're held to. We're required to show two consecutive years. So we would have to do '21, '22, the state test that we just took. And then in March and April and May, when we retake these state exams, this will be our second year to show consecutive progress. So that would be the two consecutive years. And so removal from receivership occurs typically at the end of the school year. The idea that the superintendent would no longer serve as receiver means that we also have to hit our targets as well on ELA, math, and attendance rates. And so what we do is we follow our continuation plan. We make sure that the plan that we've written, the four areas that we think we can use to turn around the school are being implemented. And that we're monitoring those improvement turnaround strategies. And I'll talk a little bit about what those are. And really, this is not something that school does alone. This is something that's a partnership with families and with teachers and our students. That we want to engage families in what does this mean? Why is it important for my child to come to school every day? Why is it that they have to sit for this New York State test when I'm not sure that it's the best measure of kids? But how is it that we engage in those conversations and say, it is important for New York State to know how this school is doing. We are one school among thousands of schools in New York State. And it is important for the state to know how we're doing overall with students. And we work with families to encourage our families to say, we want more. It's not okay for us to be in the bottom 5% of schools in New York State. We don't think that that's who we are. We don't think that this is necessarily capturing the population that we serve. And so how can we make sure that the state sees exactly who we are here at Kane Elementary? And overall, we listen to the feedback. If something in the school is not working for families, we need to make sure we're really listening to that feedback and adjusting our system inside of the school to make it a better fit for our families and for our dragons. In '22, '23, these were the demonstrable progress indicators we were held to. There was 10 of them. And what I'm highlighting for you now is the ones that have shifted. So what's highlighted in green is what the state has, we have adjusted and what the state has adjusted for us. So I'm going to just talk quickly about some of the shifts. And I'll give you a little bit more detail about that. Uh-oh, hang on. I'll give you a little bit more detail about why. So one of the things, Level 1 indicators, so those are the top gray band indicators up at the top of the screen. Those are indicators that New York State gives to us. We have no choice in what those are. New York State says, something is happening and we need you to be measured based on these. And so school safety was added this past year due to some of the incidents that we've had inside of the school. And so New York State, because of one incident that we had inside of our elementary school, has deemed that we have to watch school safety inside of our building. The other indicator that they added was what's called the 3 through 8. So it's basically students in third, fourth, and fifth grade are growth. And because now we have a test to actually compare, '21, '22, to the test that they'll take in '22, '23, is why New York State wants to add that growth measure in to see, are we actually growing across these two data points that the state can look at for us? The rest of them are in there that are the same. So if they're not highlighted in green, it means that we've been already looking at those measures. The additional ones that we added, so you'll see that some were dropped out. We used to have some conversations about how our Black students were performing inside of the system. And some, there was one that we had was Indicator 54. I'll kind of go back so you can see that. Indicator 54, which is right here, are economically disadvantaged, how they did compared to their non-economically disadvantaged peers. We actually hit some of those targets, and so New York State has removed those from us. They removed them, but then some get added on. So it's a little bit complicated. But so these are some of the ones that we decided to pick as we went back through the demonstrable progress indicators. Level 2 indicators, that's all here in the blue band, those are indicators that we're allowed to pick. So the school is given some discretion on what they're able to pick. And so we went through the system and kind of looked at some more indicators for us to watch. We are considered, the majority of the children inside of our building are labeled as economically disadvantaged, meaning that the annual income that the families have is below a certain level. And so the majority of our students and families qualify under being considered economically disadvantaged. And because that's a large population for us, it feels statistically significant for us to pick those, because we can probably show high growth among that population, which is the majority of the children here at Kane. And so Indicator 38, an ELA economically disadvantaged student, how are they growing? As like a subgroup, just to look at just the economically disadvantaged students. How are the economically disadvantaged students doing on what's called a P.I.? So this is growth, this compares last year's test to this coming year's test. The P.I. says if we just did a dipstick in '22, '23, how did they do? And so that's a performance index of how did they do one time? And then we held that one for 115, which is how did the economically disadvantaged students do it on the math test as a one-time dip. We also are a community school, so our Indicator 2 is one that we used last year when we launched as a community school. We're continuing with the community schools model to see what does year two look like under the community school model. And then we just proposed to New York State a classroom walkthrough tool that we would like to use, because the district has launched this tool inside of our system. And so we felt that it would be a really good fit for Kane Elementary to watch classroom instruction across the course of the year. And so this chart just kind of shows you what our targets are from New York State. So basically, once we submit the indicators that we want to be held to, other than Level 1s, which are picked for us, New York State kind of applies a formula and tells you like what your target should be when we sit and take this test in '22, '23, in March and April. And so these are kind of what our targets are. This is what we watch and compare ourselves throughout the course of the school year. These are the four areas that we look at to show school turnaround. And so the biggest thing that we do is professional learning communities among our teachers. How does it that we look at the student data? How are students performing on things like iReady or our letters or Hegarty assessments? How are they doing on wit and wisdom inside of our system? And we study that data and see how it is that we can adjust our instruction to better meet the needs of the children in our school. Another turnaround strategy we have is the community schools model. So how is it that we're assessing what our families need? What are the strengths that our families have? And what are the barriers or potential needs that families have? And how are we responding as a community school to provide those resources and abolish those barriers that exist for families? Restorative justice is the third turnaround strategy that we use here. So how is it that we're shifting our discipline model here in the school from shifting from a punitive disciplinary model, where maybe in the traditional days, a student would be assigned something like a detention or a suspension? How are we looking to be more educative? How are we teaching the behaviors that we hope to see among children? So that's our restorative justice work that we do inside the system. And then school climate revitalization, this is a similar strategy we've had for several years. How is it that our physical plant looks and is reflective of the population that we serve? And how does it send messages, both the physical plant, but also the academics that we do, send messages to children every day about what we believe that they can do and what they're capable of and showing school pride? So there's a little image here that says coming soon, because according to New York State right now, all of our ELA testing scores and math testing scores that we just took last March are still called, they're being called embargoed, meaning that we have access to it internally in the system to know kind of services we should provide for individual children. But the idea of how I can make large sweeping statements about how the school is performing overall, we're not allowed to do yet. So that's, it's still embargoed data, but I'm going to give you a little sneak preview of what I think is happening based on individual numbers and kids that I'm seeing. And so for Indicator 100, which is how our kids did on the ELA exam as a dipstick, last year at this time, I'll kind of show you, this is tracing from 2017, 2018. You know, overall, how did the kids do? This is a pretty sophisticated calculation of how we get this. And this was the growth that we showed from 2018 to 2019. Then I'm showing you how COVID hit and what happened when we retook those tests in '21, '22. Obviously, these are totally different kids, right? The population has turned over, but this is where our results were post-COVID. And so at last year's time, we took this test, we were at 48.85 on the ELA exam. And this year, we are anticipating that we have shown a pretty significant growth in this space. We are still being held to this indicator moving forward. We have shown growth in this area, but we have not hit the target of 84. And so what the state was saying is you needed to go from where you were here when we hit the target, it was still 84. After a global pandemic, we were still supposed to hit the same target. And so what we know is we lost a lot in those years. When kids went virtual, we lost a lot. And it was hard on families, it was hard on schools. And we know children being in front of teachers is the best place for them to be, to learn the levels of what they need to know in New York State ELA standards. And so our scores did drop last year, but we believe and we're anticipating that the scores have gone up a significant amount. I can't tell you exactly. But also down here is what's important too. So this percentage here is showing you that on the test on grades three, four, and five, 15 of those third, fourth, and fifth graders out of 131 total kids in third, fourth, and fifth grade were proficient, meaning they were hitting the state benchmark. This year, we believe we've added about four more students to this total number. And so we've kept those 15, and we believe we've added some more to that group. Indicator 102, this is not going to be an indicator moving forward anymore. So we have dropped this indicator, because as I said before, this is related to our Black subgroup. We are no longer held to a Black subgroup, because the number that we have is below what they would consider a traceable subgroup inside of the organization, meaning that we have, say, under 20 students that fall into this subgroup. And so they are no longer holding us accountable to this. But what I can say is that where we were kind of before COVID, where we were after COVID, what our target was, we believe we've actually shown pretty significant growth in this area, and we were on path to making and hitting that target. Unfortunately, it's no longer an indicator for us anymore moving forward. But within that subgroup, and remember that subgroup is relatively small. So here you can see the total subgroup in this Black population was 30 children. We added two more to this group. So not three out of 30 anymore, but it was now five out of the 30 total. Indicator 46, again, this is not one that we're going to be held to anymore, because again, this is a comparison of a Black subgroup compared to non-Black students in the organization. We actually believe that we had hit this target, so the gap was, we couldn't be higher than 19. So the gap closure number is a little bit confusing, because you actually are trying to decrease the gap. We should not have a large gap between how our Black children are performing and non-Black children. So we were trying to close that gap. We anticipate that the scores coming out will be even a greater reduction than here at 13.9. So we've actually almost mitigated that entire gap that existed prior. I just wanted to highlight for folks some of the things that we're doing in ELA, just to kind of help provide a picture of like, when you hear your children talk about these kinds of things, this is why, this is strategically part of receivership, is having a really good core English language arts curriculum. So we are building in common planning time for the teachers. That's built into the master schedule. They have time to plan together as a first grade team, or as a second grade team, or a third grade team. We have an ELA coach dedicated to our school. We have, we are now entering year three of the implementation of our core ELA program called Wit and Wisdom. And our core phonics program called Foundations. And our core phonemic awareness program called Hegarty. So this is year three of the implementation of these core programs here inside of our elementary school. iReady, you might have heard of this, the kids take this on a computer. iReady is one of the measures that we use three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring to see how students are doing on math and English language arts. So this is our second year of implementing iReady. And we use diagnostic tests, we take something called a letters assessment and a Hegarty assessment to see where children's phonics and phonemic awareness skills are. Additionally, we have two AIS ELA teachers. These are academic intervention support teachers. So these are teachers that are designed to help support and supplement our English language arts curriculum. Additionally, we have three reading specialists on site. So those reading specialists can also help with the reading levels of our children and growing those reading levels that we have here. And we also have a full-time literacy TA that supports English language arts intervention. This is an indicator that we will be held to moving forward. This is Indicator 110. This is how all of our grades three, four, and five students perform on the math assessment. And so we actually grew quite significantly in this area, we believe. We didn't hit the target necessarily, but we have actually added about four more students to this 12 out of 131. So we believe four more children are proficient than were in the year prior, which would mean that this score right here would go up pretty significantly. And so while it might not have actually hit the target, we are showing positive gains for our math instruction as well. This is one that's been cut from New York State, because we actually closed this gap as well. And so we have been, this gap has been removed from us. So this is how, and one of the reasons why, when I talked earlier about why we added so many of the economically disadvantaged indicators, is because we actually do fairly well with our economically disadvantaged population. And so we want to make sure that that's captured when we're reporting to the state. And so this gap closure here, we had a target of 25. Obviously, you're trying to get to a target of zero, really. Last year was at 13.2, and we pretty dramatically closed that gap, hence why New York State removed it from us. This is one, obviously, there is nothing to show growth to. So now we have a score on '21, '22, how our children performed. And once our scores are released unembargoed, we'll be able to kind of do a growth comparison. But as I've said before, you know, I'm pretty confident that we have shown growth from the '21, '22 to the '22, '23 school year. These are some things, just like I said about ELA, these are some of the things that we do for our math instruction. Again, common planning time. We have a common curriculum called Eureka Math. Some teachers might be using something also called Tang as a product in math that we're using this year. Reflex is a computer-based program that some students log into and do work on Reflex. They also do work inside of iReady, which is our assessment platform that also has some curricular resources to support teachers. We have the iReady testing, obviously. This year, we've added a second AIS math teacher. So now we have two AIS math teachers, Ms. Williams and Mr. Cahill will serve in that role. And we've also had hired a math TA to help support math intervention. This is our attendance indicator. This is a difficult one for nationally. I think people are seeing trends nationally that are showing that getting back into school and attending regularly is pretty, pretty difficult overall. And we're not 100% sure why that's nationally happening. But we do know that it's not necessarily something that's unique to Schenectady or unique to Kane Elementary School. But we can show you here what the percentage of chronic absenteeism rate in 2017, meaning that 17.9% of kids were what was called chronically absent for that school year. And again, chronically absent at 180 school days is 10% of the school year. So you're looking at about 18 days of absences for the entire school year. Right now, we've only been in school for 18 days. So 10% of 18 means that a kid has been absent one time or just about two times, and they would be considered chronically absent at this point in time. So this is a moving number as we go across the course of the school year, each month. Obviously, you're adding another day or two. So if your child is missing a day or two a month of school, they are probably on track to be what we would call chronically absent. And we would start to worry that they were falling behind instructionally. And so last year, as we ended the school year in '22, '23, in '21, '22, we had a 69.3%, meaning 69.3% of our children inside of Kane Elementary School were considered chronically absent, that they had missed over 18 days of school for the school year. Last year, we actually made significant growth. I mean, I think 10% is pretty significant growth, and we close that to 58.3%. I think what's complicated is the target from New York State, which was set before COVID, is that we shouldn't have more than 15% of our population missing 18 days of school or more. And so this is a really, really important target for us to think about. But again, while this number seems really daunting, that 50, over 50% of the population is chronically absent here at Kane, I think one of the things that's really hopeful is, A, we reduced this pretty significantly, but also that we are one of the highest performing schools, meaning we have the highest daily attendance rate in the district. And so this kind of shows you the other side of this. This is your daily attendance rate. Chronic absenteeism is up here by grade level. And so some of the places that were the most chronically absent, pre-K, kindergarten, first grade at 69%. Our best attended grade, fifth grade, and only 18 children in fifth grade were considered chronically absent for the school year. This year, when you think, this is the reverse number, so this is percent in attendance on a day, like kind of on an average day to day. So when you think about, there's, you know, 260 children right now inside of Kane Elementary School on any particular day. What is our current daily attendance rate? That's what this is showing you from last year. So on average, we were hovering around an 85% daily attendance rate. Some people might say, what's really good? We should be at about 95% attending every single day. That we think that 95% of our population should be here every single day. And so you might say, what does that look like right now? So this is our current snapshots. We are currently at a 32.7% chronic absent. Actually, I just ran it before we got here, we're at 34.2% chronically absent. This means that kids have missed one or two days of school. So 37% of our population has missed one or two days of school. This is 89 kids out of 260. And so that's what this number reflects, and it shows you it by grade level. And then this is on the other side, just like that other chart before. This is our daily attendance rate. We're hovering around, actually, we nudged up to 90.3 because of yesterday's data. But when this data sheet was put in, we were at a 90.1% daily attendance rate. Again, like I said, we would be hoping that this is more like 95% overall. And you can see the grade levels that are struggling to attend. Fourth grade, we have a really, there was quite a bit of sickness here in fourth grade, but we're hovering around an 87% daily attendance rate for our fourth graders. And our kindergarteners are our next group at 89.1%. Our best attendance right now is pre-K and third grade. This chart is going to show you a trend, and I just kind of, I'm going to use my laser pointer to kind of draw your attention. So this is showing you last year, September '22, '23, where our daily attendance rate was at about 89%. And then follow it through the months. This is October, November last year, December. This is a daily attendance rate. So what you see here is a significant decline of our daily attendance rate every single day. So the question we start to ask ourselves is, what happened here? And then why did it take so long for us to recover on our daily attendance rate? From basically December on, we never recovered to where we were at the beginning of the school year. And so what we would ask families to consider is like, why do we think that that happens? Why does that happen overall? And then you can see here, this is September '23, '24, so this is our month of September right here. We are higher than where we were last year. And so we are starting very high, but what we're hoping to mitigate for, and we're hoping to stop, is that we don't see this tank. But we have to figure out why that happened. This is the reverse number. This is your chronic absenteeism rate, so this is September of '22, '23. We are at 47% of students were chronically absent at that time. You can see where we are now. So we have significantly reduced the number of kids that are chronically absent for the start of the school year. And then this shows you kind of, it's a little bit of a crazier trend line, because again, this is a moving target. And so the more days in school that we are, the harder this formula becomes. But basically, by December, we were at 71% of our kids were chronically absent as of December of last year. And that's a pretty significant number, but then what we do is we kind of mitigate here. So what is it that we can do to stop that chronic absenteeism rate? This is where we introduced the NBA last year. So kids joining into the NBA is part of our PBIS project, the Never Been Absent Club. And so we believe that that's one way that we started to mitigate for those chronic absenteeism. So who were the kids that we could watch that were about to hit that threshold? And how could we stop and incentivize them coming back to school and get them back in here so they never hit that 18 mark? Because once kids hit 18 days of missed school, we cannot recover them in that chronically absent number. Because they've already hit 18 for the school year, so they've already hit that number of absences. So we actually like to try to stop that, and this shows you that we were actually able to do that last year. And so here are some of the things that we're doing this year. Many of you got a magnet that looks like this for your refrigerator, where you can track the absences for your child. If your child has already missed two days for the month of September, an alarm bell should be going off inside of your head saying, oof, it's kind of a lot. Maybe it was just a sick month of September. It's really normal for when kids come back together, that there is more sniffling and sneezing, people get sick. But that that should stop by October, November, and some of those things should stop. We will see some natural things, the stomach bug will hit. Kids will go out with a stomach bug no matter what. Those germs do spread inside of a school. But ideally, we're trying to make sure that then every other day, we don't necessarily take off if they're not sick. And so this is a magnet that families can have. You can certainly reach out for us. And it says strive for 95 again, because we're trying to hit these 95% targets that your child is here 95% of the time. If your child is in need of being absent from school, we do expect you to send a note to the teacher. And that's ideally through Parent Square. You can do kind of an old-school note too, if you want to. But please communicate with your classroom teacher, and they'll probably ask you, why are they absent? And one of the reasons why that's really important is because our teachers are required to enter a code about why children are absent from school. And so that we can start to see, what are some of the barriers? Is it truly illness? But one of the things that we learned last year is that there was a lot of vacation time. And so vacations should be planned when schools are on vacation. And so, vacations should be planned when schools are on vacation. That is really important, we have vacation days built into a school system, those are the times when families should really take those vacations. We shouldn't have kids out for long stretches of time on a separate vacation. And so, those are some of the places we saw, obviously, the number one issue last year was illnesses. Kids were still being quarantined by the Department of Health, they're still being quarantined this year if students develop COVID. We've had six positive cases of COVID inside the building this year at that time, that is way less than what we've ever seen in the month of September since COVID was introduced in March of 2020. We do have the community schools model, we just hired, his first day was actually Monday, Octavius Cook will be our new community schools coordinator here at Kane Elementary School. He will be helping to support some of the work that we do inside of our school in the community school model, along with our parent liaisons, Marcia McGill and Shanti Balkaran. Those are a kind of network that we have to help say, what is it that we need inside of our community? And what is it that we need inside of our school to help families? And so, we look at data pretty regularly to see, figure out what those needs are. Parent liaisons reach out, ask questions to find out what it is that we can do better here as a school. We oftentimes survey families in our community to find out what it is that we can do, again, what we can do better here. And so, we ask that people, when they do get those surveys, really do participate in those, because that information is very valuable for our partnership families and making kind of activities that we do at school, or different types of events that we host here at Kane. And ultimately, what we talk about here at Kane is creating a culture of care. And so, what happens inside of our school is that our teachers use a system called PBIS. We hold three agreements to be true, be responsible, be respectful, and be safe. And we talk about what does that look like inside of the bathroom, what does that look like inside of the classroom, what does that look like on the playground, in recess, at lunchtime, in our auditorium. And so, these are school-wide agreements that we hold, and teachers provide feedback to children through what's called dragon bucks. And so, you can ask your babies at home, how many dragon bucks that they get, but those, that's a way that if a teacher sees the child doing those agreements, if they're being safe by having their hands by their side and walking in a straight line in the hallways, that might be something that the teacher is giving dragon bucks for. Students that pack up their materials very quickly, they're showing responsible by moving on to the next page, would be something that the teachers are rewarding inside of the classroom. We also have a social-emotional program called Second Step. This is like, again, thinking about the social-emotional skills that kids have, problem-solving, conflict resolution. Second Step is a program that all teachers are required to teach inside of their classrooms and circle up restorative practices. Kids will talk about probably the circles that they're doing inside of their classrooms. These are ways that teachers build relationships with students, and that students build relationships with each other. So, it's really hard to do restorative practices if we don't have deep connections with one another. And so, if I violate my community's norm, how is it that I work to repair that? And in order to repair that, I have to care deeply about both my teacher, but also my classmates, if something, you know, if a rule was broken, let's say, inside the classroom. Another area that we look at is how it is that we provide 200 hours of what's called extended learning time. This might be things like, you've seen this, like STEAM camps, after-school program, our STEM Saturday would be another example, but these are hours that we provide beyond the typical school day. And so, this is an indicator that we're held to, and so, this kind of shows you a breakdown of where we're offering different opportunities, and how many required hours we're supposed to have at 1100, and what we currently offer by grade level. And so, we actually offer quite a bit of extended learning time. I think the difficult part about this number is that, what the state says is that children should attend these experiences 80% of the time. And so, if children are enrolled in our after-school program, the state looks to see, are they attending 80% of those after-school dates? And so, this kind of shows you, broken down by the different extended learning times that we offer, from Summer Enrichment Program, the summer where we served 115 children, which is pretty significant, that's almost half our population. How it is, what, like last year, the 21st Century After-School Program, we served 98 children in our after-school program. Our February STEAM camp served 71 children, April STEAM camp served 29. We had a program called Empire State Youth Orchestra, two of our children attended that on Saturdays. And Girls Inc. is another program that's offered down the street, and two of our girls attended our Girls Inc. program. These are some other things that we do. Parent Square is something that we use as two-way communication between teachers and school staff with families, so Parent Square is an app that families should have downloaded on their cellphones. These are the interactions that we've had so far for the month of September. And these are ways that we look at how it is that our families are engaging in different kind of community experiences, whether it's parent-teacher conferences or professional learning experiences, we track to see how we're doing overall. And this is a place where we do relatively well. A couple of things to look forward to, we'll have trunk-or-treat again this year on October 28th from 1 until 4, that's on a Saturday. We will be participating in downtown Schenectady Parade, this year's theme, New York State of Mind, that's on November 18th at 5:00 PM. And now that Octavius Cook is on staff, along with our parent liaisons, there'll be many more offerings that we have throughout the course of this year as community-building activities. And so, kind of to wrap up, what is it that we would ask for from families as part of this work? I think truly, this is a partnership for us, this is not work that we do alone. I ask that you try to work to see that your child can attend school every single day. As we've mentioned before, it is so important that your child is in front of teachers. The examples that I give in kindergarten, remember, a kindergarten teacher teaches about two letters a week, is the most simple way to think of it. If your child misses a day in that week and they miss that letter, it really takes a long time before that letter comes back into circulation. And so, it's one of those things that the more they fall behind, they start to get these little gaps inside of what they're learning as their classmates are moving forward. The other thing that I talk about all the time, it's a passion of mine, is read, read, read with your child. Keep it fun, keep it engaging, this doesn't have to be a comprehension quiz, this is like sitting on mommy's lap, reading a book together, or sitting with daddy and reading stories together, laughing and joking, talking about the pictures that are inside of picture books, but make reading really joyful at home, at least 20 minutes a day. The littler that they are, the less it has to be, but ideally, you're doing about 20 minutes a day at home. And then, they see you reading too, and how important that is to you. We ask you that you talk to your child about school, share with us about what it is that they are finding really joyful about school, and if there's some pain points, make sure that you share those with us as well. What is it that we can do better? If kids are not having a good day at school, we want to know that. Why is that happening, and what can we do to fix it? Because it helps us improve. And this last part here, talk to your friends, your parent network about getting involved in Kane. Our parent liaisons have PTO meetings, it's a great place for families to come, share ideas, participate in different types of activities. So, a PTO is Shanti Balkaran and Marcia McGill, they kind of help oversee, they're our parent liaisons, they'll be pushing out information about dates that are coming up. Event planning, you can always join us in helping us plan different types of events. Trunk-or-treat is obviously the one that's coming most quickly. And so, we're partnering with the Schenectady Rotary, we're partnering with Schenectady High School, and Liberty Church as part of our trunk-or-treat program.